Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed on each of us since we last gathered together. As we enter the new year together and choose our leadership, we ask a special blessing upon those who offer themselves for service. Lead, guide, and direct all of our actions so that they may truly be in the best interests of the children we serve, for it is in your name that we ask these things. Amen.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Acevedo is not with us. Mr. Campbell, Dr. Kraft, and Mr. Egan are not with us. Mr. Gaines, Mr. England, Mrs. Disart, Mrs. Lemoine, Dr. Lewis, Mr. Long, and Ms. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. First item on the agenda, community concerns. None. And before we go on to the next item, I'd like to take a point of privilege at this time to recognize and to congratulate Dr. Thomas Warner, otherwise known as Coach, Dr. Tommy, and a father of one of our board members.
His nickname is Hoodie.
Hoodie's his nickname. Okay, well, just this past weekend Hoodie and Dr. Warner were recognized at the Community College Foundation Gala, and it was a beautiful reception prior to the gala and very well-deserved, very well-attended to honor Dr. Warner, who has dedicated over 60 years of his life to education as a teacher, as a coach, as an administrator, and as an assistant superintendent, and then as chancellor of, no, a state representative, and then also just recently as the chancellor of Nunez Community College. Dr. Warner is a fine person, a gentleman, a wonderful family member, family man who had seven children, and did a wonderful job of raising his family along with his beautiful wife, Ms. Mary. And we just, on behalf of the board, I just want to say, thank you, Dr. Warner. You've done a great job. It's been more than a pleasure, but an honor, to work alongside you and with you, and we appreciate all of your contributions to the St. Bernard Parish school system, to the educational system, and to St. Bernard Parish. We thank you for being a wonderful friend, and we truly do appreciate all of your efforts. Dr. Warner was very, I know when this board first wanted to do the dual enrollment with the college, he made sure that, you know, we were able to get the funds to do so when the community college was 13th and 14th grade, and, you know, we worked alongside Representative at that time, Dr. Warner, who was a state rep, and Manny Fernandez, who was the state rep, and he, and of course Senator Nunez. All of those people, along with Dr. Warner, helped us have Nunez Community College be recognized as a college, and not just as a 13th, 14th grade. And also, in doing so, was able to be funded more so by the state. When we were 13th, 14th grade here, we had to take from our K-12 program to fund it. So it was just so beneficial, you know, for it to become a college, and Dr. Warner was very instrumental in that, along with all the others that I mentioned in the school board. And I just want to say again, congratulations, Dr. Warner. We love you, and we will miss you, but we know you'll be around in the community and being active, and we want to wish you a very, very happy retirement. And thank you very, very much for all you've done for the educational system for our youth in St. Bernard Parish.
Very nice.
It's the thought.
Coach knows that.
Anyone else?
A permanent privilege.
Okay, Mr. England.
Yes, I have a little sad news, that we lost one of our board members for many years. He was the vice president of this board for about 11 years, I think he was vice president. I think he served with you, Ms. Disart, Mr. Ken Rabelay. He was a coach at Shamet High School. He, you know, he went into the insurance business, and he was, right now, he was living in Landville. And he was a ace of a fellow. I mean, you can ask for a nicer fellow for our school system. He helped out the school system greatly, too, you know. So if we could have a moment of silence, and I can don't, just go out to the family, Rabelay family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. England. Yes, it was a privilege to work alongside Mr. Rabelay. He was quite a gentleman and a wonderful board member. Thank you for that acknowledgement. Okay, Ms. Foche, did you have something?
No, I mean, I just wanted just to reiterate what you said about Dr. Warner. I mean, I don't want to elongate this or belabor, but I remember as a very young teacher back in 1971, when I was getting ready to teach at Shamet High School, there were these paddleball courts that were behind the school, cement paddleball courts. And at that time, I was very young, very agile and athletic and whatever, and I was back there playing paddleball and thinking, wow, this is a really great place to be. And this man comes in with one of his sons, I don't know which one it was, it was probably young Tommy at the time, I don't, and said, can we play with you? And I said, well, sure, I'll play with you. And he goes on to say that I beat him in paddleball, which I think, but that was my first introduction. I didn't know who he was, and then he turned out to be a supervisor with the school system. And he would come in my classes and observe. And then I had the, you know, honor of teaching all four of his sons. At that time, it was Shamet High, it was all boys. And over the course of the years and the different functions that I served or jobs that I had within the school system, I had the great pleasure of having a lot of contact with him. And especially when I was running finances and all the non-instructional parts of the school system, and of course, he lived right there, right on the side of Shamet High, and would run that track every day, and would call me constantly about, before we got the all-weather track and the state-of-the-art facilities, replacing the red dog on the track, the cinder. And the only place you can get it was in Texas. So I would have to order, and that was for both St. Bernard and Shamet High, but he would always alert me to where we needed to add the red dog and make it visible. So at that point, you know, I just have real fond memories. And then, of course, as chancellor of Nunez Community College and working much more closely with him over the last few years in a very academic environment, I mean, he's just a prince of a man, and just a wonderful family man, and wonderful educator, and a tremendous friend to the St. Bernard Parish school system. And those were his roots here as an educator in St. Bernard, and he never forgot it. So while his love at the community college in the last years of his career, I know is legendary in bringing the college back, you know, his fondness for the K-12 program and doing everything he possibly could to help us to succeed, I truly appreciate. So just wanted to thank him on that.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Warner?
I just wanted to thank you for the kind words from the board. My father, he has a lot of love, so he'll be good in retirement. I think he's going to be fine. But thank you very much for the very kind words that were stated here by him tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. And just one more thing about Mr. Warner. When I was a senior in high school, he is the one, he was assistant superintendent, I guess, or supervisor at the time. He's the one that gave our senior class our high school ring. So that was the first time that I, you know, I mean, I knew he was a coach and all, and then he became supervisor. So, you know, he just, so many people have so many wonderful memories and, you know, relationship and thinking. Okay, next, super news, Ms. Alex Schneider. Good evening.
Good evening. In your folders, you have the January communications report marked as number five. Looks a little bit different than our previous communications report. We've included some additional information there for you, including some of our most popular Facebook posts and some analytics that go along with that. So on the front page of that report, I'm just going to walk you through it since the first time we're seeing it. What you'll see is four of our more popular Facebook posts. For example, the first post on the right is a Facebook post we shared from nola.com, which was a video of our band students playing at the Shamet High School Christmas show. You'll notice that right below that picture, you'll see the views. And just to give you an indication of how powerful social media is, nearly 33,000 people viewed that video posted by nola.com. That had a ton of traction and was really great press for our students. Below that, you can see the post we did regarding our 2017 highlights. That included students and teachers saying a few of their favorite things from this past year. You'll notice that this includes a reach. Basically, that number indicates how many people on Facebook actually saw the post versus the views right below it is how many people clicked on the post to watch the entire video. If you flip the page, you'll see a couple additional posts that I've included here, and then you'll see our summary sheet. Facebook provides users the opportunity to track their analytics. And so, just given the size of the screen, I included for you since January 5th our Facebook posts. The reach is, again, how many people actually that post was seen by on Facebook, and engagement includes how many people either liked or commented. You will notice that our most popular post was regarding school closures. And that post, just again, to reiterate how powerful this tool was, was seen by nearly 50,000 people. If you flip the page, one thing that we have not touched on in a while, and I wanted to be sure to come back to, was our website. This is the analytic page for our homepage of our district website to give you an indication of how we are reaching the public through those platforms. This is just the homepage of our district webpage, but you will see total visits, nearly 1.5 million. And those other numbers, total page views is how many people view just the homepage. And then total targeted visits is how many people clicked a link that directly took them to our homepage. And the reason those numbers are a little bit different is sometimes when we include links to our page or to our website, we'll include links to pages other than the homepage. So when we share, you know, our pre-K4 registration packet, I'll give that direct link, and that is why those numbers are a little bit different. Below that, you'll see the press releases that were published since the beginning of the month. And finally, we have, we took a little bit of a hiatus on our teacher features with our special edition of super news featuring our Teachers of the Year in December, and our January super news featuring our Students of the Year. But once again, starting in February, we will have our regular teacher features and super news. So the three board members who are scheduled to be filmed at our upcoming second board meeting of the month are listed there. I did find out that that date had changed after I printed this, so I apologize about that date change. So with that said, this month, for our super news, we will be taking a look at our 11 Students of the Year. They were, I had the opportunity to sit in on those interviews with Mr. England. It was a true blessing, very powerful, to kind of meet our best and brightest from this district, and I'm excited for you guys to get a chance to see them. So without further ado, I'll let Jack take it from here.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news.
For this edition of super news, we will take a look at 11 of our school district's best and brightest, this year's Students of the Year.
I believe I was chosen for Student of the Year because they saw me as a leader for the school. And being a leader to me means showing the younger kids in sixth grade what it means to be a positive role model and to help anybody that you can, and just to make sure that you're doing the best you can, no matter what.
How helpful I am and how nice and courageous I am. Whenever somebody needs help, I ask the teacher if I can help them with whatever they are struggling with.
I think the teachers and the principal chose me to be Student of the Year because my, I guess they saw my fun personality. I'm always being told I have such a goofy and fun personality, so I guess that's kind of why they picked me.
I put 110% in all of my work, homework or just tests or leaps, and I think that really paid off in Student of the Year.
My favorite subject is math because since I like sports a lot, I'm used to numbers and how they work.
My favorite class at the school in cultural arts is art because, I don't know, I guess I'm an artist, they say. I'm in the art club, so apparently I'm good. But I like art a lot. I like to create things from nothing, a piece of paper and a pencil.
Math and science because in science, we get to do experiments, and it's just what I like because it's about nature and the solar system. And I like, and I also like math because I like to do numbers, and I know it will help me become successful in life.
Chorus and choir, CHS Voices, has given me a true family. Since ninth grade and even before ninth grade, knowing the people who organized that, knowing the caesars, knowing my people who have been with me that went into chorus in ninth grade, they've given me a family.
My favorite club is Beta Club because I love to meet new people, and we go to state convention every year, and the people there are just amazing, and I have so much in common with them, and they have so much in common with me. And I get to also meet new teachers and sponsors there.
My favorite club is Academic Games, and it really has a bunch of different things. Like, we play games that involve math and logic, and then we also play some things that have presidents. So you get to learn about a lot of different things that maybe you didn't learn in school yet, or stuff that you won't learn in school. And about once a month, we have a tournament, and we usually go to Shamet Elementary, and we compete against the other schools in the games that we learned how to play, and it's really fun.
My favorite is cheer because I've been doing cheer since last year, and it's like really fun. And like, when you march in a parade, it's like PE, but like, longer.
I have several interests going. Sometimes I want to be an actor, sometimes I want to be a doctor, other times I want to be an artist. But right now, I'm leaning towards the medical field because it's always been my dream to cure cancer.
Being a technical engineer because you could code things, make fun games, and make robots, which are really fun to play with.
I want to be a veterinarian because I like animals a lot. I have a dog myself and a gecko, and my dog, like, she's really playful, so I just get happy when I see her happy.
I have a specific dream job, and I know it's kind of a far stretch, but I want to be a singer. I love singing and I love dancing, so I feel like I can incorporate both of them together. And, I mean, listening to music, it just helps me through so much. It puts me in a place where I can really think about things, and it just, it calms me. So, and music helps me. It helps lots of people, actually, and I want to be one of those people who influence other people and make big decisions that could actually help somebody in a difficult situation.
So when I grow up, I also want to be a professional softball player. If being a child psychologist don't work out, because I also love to travel because I like seeing new places, and I get to travel in my RV, and it's really fun, do all around and go hang out with friends, and I get to make new friends, and I love making new friends.
It's still undetermined where I'm going next year. It's probably going to be either Loyola University or Tulane University, nice year in the city, depending on scholarships, depending on majors. Life changes, life is funny, and I don't exactly have a thorough thought-out plan, and even if I did, it's bound to change. But as of right now, it will probably be Loyola or Tulane University to study business.
My favorite teacher at Shamet Elementary is Ms. Arnold, my math and science teacher. She's my favorite teacher because she pushes me to go harder and to put all my effort into my work so I can get good grades.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Bulkey. She's my English teacher because she really lets me be creative, and she's helped me a lot to improve my writing. Her class is really different than a lot of other peoples I've been in.
I'd say Ms. Bergard because even though she was my kindergarten teacher, she still looks out for me today.
I could never pick a favorite teacher. I could pick out my favorites, plural, teachers who taught me different things, teachers who taught me not just education things, but life experiences and skills that have made me to the person I am today. But as far as one that stands out, I will pick, one of my earliest favorite teachers would be Ms. Robin Acosta, who taught me fourth grade at J.F. Goche Elementary School, and was one of the first teachers that really got my mind just zapping at all the possibilities of expanding your mind, making your life as knowledgeable as possible, and asking the questions of why, why does this work? How does this work? How can I make this better?
Again, Goche is a great school to go to. There's a great staff, there's great teachers, the cultural arts program is amazing, and honestly, they don't have the worst cafeteria food, if you're wondering about that.
All of my teachers and my principal, Ms. Seabrook, I'm going to miss everybody who's there, and some of my friends aren't going to Shamet, so I'm going to miss them, too. St. Bernard is just a really comfortable environment, and it just makes me feel like I'm at home.
My message to any future nominees for Student of the Year is always be yourself and try your hardest, even if you don't succeed. You might succeed next time, so don't give up, and always thank your parents and your family members for being there for you when you need them the most.
And that will do it for this edition of super news. We wish Robin Hayes, Avani Miller, and Kelsey Billyatt good luck at the regional competitions. Thank you for representing our district with pride.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Congratulations to all of our Students of the Year. How wonderful. They all speak so eloquently and just all, I know a few of them personally, and they are just super bright students. And congratulations to each and every one of them, and also to all the teachers who they've had this year and in the past, and helped them become the students that they are. So congratulations to each of the Students of the Year. Ms. Schneider, do you have anything else?
That will do it, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Warner?
I have a question on the number of visits to our site. Well, we had a huge jump in August of last year, and September, October. Any, you have an explanation?
Yep. Yeah, so the starting of school, and then, you know, the peaking in October and November is report card conferences, and then following that, the nine-week, the midsemester report card. And then you start to see a decline around the Christmas holidays. You also notice that it's lower during the summer months.
Yeah.
And that was true for the previous years as well. We saw an increase in visits at those times.
If I may, if you look at January, I'm sure the closures will keep really high. I was checking, see if they were open or not.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or anything else on super news? Well, I just have one more. I wanted to take this time to also recognize Ms. Jessica Valongo, who coordinated the Top Chef competition that was held Friday night at the MoMA Center, and some of us were very fortunate to be able to attend. It was so well-done. So congratulations to Ms. Valongo and all the teachers that helped out and helped put it together, the mena pen, and Mr. Schneider, and the students in the tech crew. They did a wonderful job with the lighting, and they just made it a great event. And a special congratulations to Elia Mendez, who was one of the two top chefs, and these were the two from, I think it was, well, six or eight of them that started out, eight of them. And then these two students were, their foods were highlighted, and they were, you know, those in attendance got to taste their appetizer, a main course, and then a dessert. And it was such a difficult decision, just like Students of the Year, that we have so many, you know, it's hard to make a choice on our students. They are so talented, so wonderful. But Elia Mendez was one of the top chefs, and the other one was Corinne Knight. And congratulations go to both of them because they did an unbelievably great job. And Corinne Knight was the winner. And again, it was very, very difficult, and all those who attended and who had to vote, but they voted, just an awesome job. Their food was fabulous. It was better than any, you know, restaurant that you could think of. It was just wonderful. They did, the presentation was beautiful, and, you know, so congratulations to our top chefs, they did a great job. Ms. Foche?
Yeah, and just along with that, I think it was a wonderful event, especially for the first one. There were over 100 community members who had bought a ticket. The presentation of the food was wonderful, the ambassadors from the school, the students did the serving, they came out quickly, the logistics were just well-done, and it started at 6:00, ended at 7:30. I'm sorry. Started at 6:00, it ended at 7:30. So it was a good, concise event that was just jam-packed continually with activity, and those students did a wonderful job as they cooked in the kitchen at the MoMA Center. So everything was coming out freshly cooked, and the students, the ambassadors from Shamet High were serving. And, you know, we're just very thankful, and we're hoping to grow that event where more and more community members would participate and see the great things that our students in the career and technical areas do. And part of the program highlighted some of the career and tech programs that we have within the community, not just the cultural arts program, but some of the others as well, so that we can get the message out to our community of the good things that are happening at the high school, and really primarily in partnership with Nunez Community College. So it was a wonderful event, and we thank everyone who attended, and we're hoping to see bigger and better crowds in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. Anyone else? Okay, thanks again, Ms. Schneider. We appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, election of officers. And according to our board policy, our officers have only two years to have the office of the president or the vice president, and this is the end of the two years. And before we do elect a new president, I just would like to say to my fellow board members, I thank you for the opportunity to have served the last two years as your president. I really appreciate the opportunity and the fact that we work so well together, and it's been an honor and a privilege, and I sincerely thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
And Ms. Daisart, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last two years, and you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mr. England, and I feel the same about you as vice president. Thank you very much. It's been a wonderful working relationship, and we are very blessed as a board, I just have to say. You know, recently in the news, we, you know, there's several school boards who have having some difficulties with, you know, cooperating and working diligently and cooperatively together. So we're very blessed. So it's been a pleasure to work with you, Mr. England as vice president, and again, with all my fellow board members sitting at this horseshoe, I thank you very much. And we, a lot more is done to work as a team, that's for sure, along with our superintendent. So it, you know, I appreciate that, that effort of all. Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations of president. Ms. Long.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cliff England.
Okay, there's a motion to nominate Cliff, Mr. Cliff England.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Okay, there's a nomination for Mr. Cliff England in a second. Are there any other nominations at this time?
I move the nomination, be closed.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell to close the nominations. Seconded by Mr. Gaines, on favor of to close the nominations, signify by saying aye. Aye. Mr. Cliff England, congratulations on becoming the president.
I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for giving me the opportunity to serve for the, as president for this next year. Also, I'd like to thank my wife and my, my family for their support. But you know who I'd really like to thank? I'd like to thank all the employees of St. Bernard Parish School Board, who make our district one of the best in the state. That's where, that's where it falls at, to work as a group. So, thank you all again, and now we'll move on.
You have the floor, Mr. England, and the gallows. Congratulations, Mr. England.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Daisart, for the kind words. Okay, we'll move on to the election of office of vice president. We're gonna open up the floor for nominations. Open, do we have a nomination for vice president, please?
I'd like to nominate Diana Daisart, be vice president.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Diana, Diana Daisart, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Okay, any other nominations?
I move the nomination, close.
Okay. Nominations are closed. Do we have a motion to approve? Right. Seconded by Mr. Warner. Congratulations, Ms. Daisart.
Thank you, Mr. England, I appreciate it. And thank you, fellow board members, and I look forward to continuing to work with Mr. England. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence. Appreciate it. And do you want to switch?
Oh, we can just, for tonight, we're just, say right away.
All right, thank you very much.
No, this is fine. You did a fantastic job to sit there for a while and relax.
Thank you, Ms. England.
You're welcome. Okay, so go on to motion number seven. The motion to authorize the new elected school board president to sign the school board checking account on behalf of the board. We have a motion, Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Ms. Lemoine. All in favor, please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Okay. Now, item number eight, motion to incorporate the minutes of January 2018 general committee meeting into the minutes of January 18th regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Dr. Lewis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any questions? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes, Mr. Gaines.
Oh, sorry.
Eight, zero.
Number nine, motion to approve pupil progression changes. This is recommended by the committee. Mister, motion by Ms. Long, seconded by Ms. Daisart. Do we have Ms. Houghton here, if we've got any questions? She's getting ready to leave. Got any questions for her? We better catch her. Well, if not, yes, Mr. Gaines.
Were there any other changes besides what you presented last time? Nope, okay.
Is it, Mr. Gaines? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Okay, the motion to approve the resolution stating the date, time, and place for the 2018 general committee and regular monthly meeting. This was recommended by the committee. Okay, the motion's on Dr. Lewis. Seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Let me just read it to the minutes. I think, didn't we read it in the minutes? Okay, you want to read it again? We'll read it again. You got it right there? There it is, in the back. Okay. Whereas Title 17 requires school board to hold at least one regular monthly meeting that a public written notice be, meeting be given, and whereas Act 707 of the 1977 Louisiana legislature exempts local school boards from having to give written notice of each regular meeting by adopting the resolution established the date, time, and place of regular meetings. And whereas the Louisiana School Board Association has recommended that all school boards in the state of Louisiana adopt a resolution to this effect, and that the resolution be given appropriate written public notice. Therefore, be resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board hereby establish 6:00 p.m. on the second Tuesday of each month of the calendar year 2018 to meet as a committee to hold for a general meeting, general committee meeting, and 6:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month for the calendar year 2018 to meet for its regular monthly board meeting, with the following exceptions. February 6, 2018 for the general committee meeting, February 20, 2018 for its regular monthly meeting, December 18, 2018 for its regular monthly meeting, and it be resolved that the said meeting will be conducted at St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, 200 East St. Bernard Highway, Shamet, Louisiana. And then the agenda will be posted 24 hours prior to a meeting, and it be further resolved that a written public notice be given at least 24 hours in advance of any change in a date, time, place, or regular meeting to be. Be resolved, resolved further that this resolution be posted at St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, and that copies be forwarded to local newspaper. So we have a first and second. Do we want to make this an acclamation, or do we want to? Okay. Joint acclamation? All in favor? Aye. So be it. And we move on to number 11, review of personnel changes for January 2018. Mr. Granberry, how you doing, sir?
All right. Few changes, not many, which is good.
Let's see where we got a retiree, Cheryl Mancapo?
Machado.
Machado. Okay. I hope she has a good retirement. How are we stacking up for math teachers and all that right now?
Well, we're fully staffed right now.
We're fully staffed, everything is working fine.
I hate to say that, but we are fully staffed.
In other words, it's like Murphy's Law, huh?
Yeah, it's like Murphy's Law. But, you know, we are fully staffed right now, and we, we doing well, so.
Right, okay, great.
But we can always use math teachers.
Right.
People are becoming certified, are looking into our district, we'd be happy to speak with them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Granberry. I'm sorry, Ms. Daisart, anybody?
I just, I just wanted to make a comment on medical leaves. I know at least one of those is for a new baby. The medical leave is maternity, and I see that Mr. Gattuso is joining us again, which is a wonderful thing, one of my former coaches, and he was the bus transportation manager. So it's great to have Mr. Gattuso back. So, and it's good that our teachers are helping us to repopulate St. Bernard Parish.
Definitely. And one of the board members is taking care of the other medical leave there, you know?
Right, yeah, we noticed that Mr. Barry Lemoine's on there. He has his own private nurse.
We'll be looking forward to having Blue back.
Right. Anybody else? Dr. Craft.
Yeah, pouring a personal privilege, I apologize for being late. I was on 510. I missed an obstruction there, it wasn't that big, but the back tar caught it, and I had a blowout. So I drove on the tar from out on the other side of the bridge about 10 miles an hour, left it at Little Owls Place at Fredella's, and my daughter picked me up to drop me off here. So that's the reason I'm late. Yeah, goodness, I hated to lose that good tar, too.
We're glad you're here, so it sounds.
I thought a couple of times going that slow, those big trucks were going plow right into them. I had my blinkers on, and that's one of, one of those things. Been decades since I had a blowout, but whatever that was, it did a number on the tar. I got out and looked at it, I said, "Well, it won't do any more damage if I ride on it, so I'm going in."
Well, we'd like to have you here, Doc. Okay, we'll move on to item 12, items to be placed on the agenda for next committee meeting. Ms. Voce, I'd like to have something put on there if at all possible. This is to discuss the procedures for, it's unfortunate that Dr. Lewis is going to be leaving, but we have to do a replacement. And so what I want to do is, what are the procedures that would go by, and so the board can discuss whether we appoint someone, or are we gonna send it out openly so everybody can apply for it for the remaining months of this year? So I'd like to put that on the agenda, please.
Okay, we're gonna have that on February agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gaines.
I noticed in the SuperNews, we, the strength of those students, when they mentioned math or science, and there's an initiative out there called STEM, which is Science, Technology, you know, Engineering and Math. There's also another one I was brought by my daughter called STEAM, which adds A, which is, you know, the, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. So, what I would like, Ms. Voce, is to report our STEAM activities in this, in this district, and how they support our, you know, achievements, and any extracurricular activities like robot, I saw that guy in Smith, he really wants to get into robotics, oh, we're providing that kind of service to our children.
Also, Ms. Voce, a point of privilege on this one right here, I just received this press release that another Posse, we got awarded for another Posse Scholarship. And it's from Shamet High, she got notified, so I just want the public to know, it's, this name's Mylin Home?
That's good.
That's good, close enough. But she has the Posse Scholarship, and that's a, a complete honor for our district and for Shamet High School, really, and congratulations. That's awesome, right. Okay, anything else from Ms. Voce? That being said, we go on to item number 14, adjournment. Well, I'm sorry, superintendent's recommendations. Go ahead, Ms. Voce.
Just fine.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Okay. No, we've had a very, I guess, smooth opening of our second semester, except for the little weather event that we had, which necessitated that we close school for two days, but everyone has, I think, come back rejuvenated, ready to go, and things are looking well as we begin the second semester with all of the activities that we have.
Do we have to make up those two days?
No, 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 no. We have those days built into the calendar. We've been very fortunate this year that we have not had to use any. So we do not have to make up that instructional time because we have two and a half to three days built into the original school calendar. So let's hope that we have no other events between now and the end of the school year.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, item number 14, adjournment.
I move it.
Mr. Campbell? Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Craft, seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor? Aye. This means it's adjourned. Thank you.